Welcome to the May 4th, 2022 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, the Chair of the Planning Board. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and possibly remote participants, I will read the following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Act of 21, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, May 4th, 2022 at 5:30 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Massachusetts, 02664. The public is welcome to attend remote access will be provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website at www.yarmouth.m a.us. I'd like to begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin.
Present.
Liz Hartsgrove. Susan Britta.
Present.
Will Rubenstein.
Present.
Chris Vincent. Jim Saban. Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I will now call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
For a while. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda this evening is a review of the zoning articles from the recent annual town meeting on April 26, 2022. Last week, we successfully presented zoning articles related to short-term rentals and seasonal housing that were approved at the annual town meeting. The petitioner's article regarding 17 Berry Ave was defeated. I would like to thank the members of the board for their important work on these articles, and of course, a very special thanks to our town planner, Kathy Williams, for her extraordinary efforts. Special thanks also to Mark Grills, Building Commissioner Bruce Murphy, our Health Director, Yarmouth Community Partnership, and the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce for their help and assistance in the successful promulgation of these articles. As promised at our town, promised at our public hearing and at town meeting, we will be evaluating the performance of these two measures in the fall. We will keep the public apprised as to the date of when those summits will be recurring. Kathy, anything else on review from the annual town meeting that you'd like to add?
No, I think it went very smoothly for us.
Yeah, it did. I thought it was, I thought it was a good, a good town meeting, actually.
I think you guys are very well prepared, so that's very much appreciated. So you're able to answer questions.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the planning goals, Planning Board Goals for the coming year. In our packets that Kathy put together was the note that we sent to the Board of Selectmen, our annual report, in which we laid out our goals for this period that we're in now. And these included completing the vision plan, securing funding for the local comprehensive plan consultant, and amending zoning bylaws to address seasonal housing and short-term rentals. I think we can declare victory on all of those. Agreed?
I mean, I, yes, I agree, but I just wasn't sure about the funding of the LCP because I didn't know if that is a budgetary, as a budgetary process, I didn't know where we were. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Well, I retract my ignorance.
No, that's okay. Well, it got confusing because there was a lot of capital in there.
There was.
What was the final amount?
A hundred, Kathy?
A hundred.
Yes, please. I will join you in declaring victory, Madam Chair.
We will declare victory on those.
Thank you for the clarification.
And now we need to begin deliberations on the coming year. And I think starting it earlier this year is a good thing. We'll have more time to focus on some important areas that Kathy might see on the horizon for us. So Kathy, if I can turn it to you on some things you know are coming up that we would probably need to think about addressing. We will bring this up again at our next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have our newest member, Jim Saban, was unable to attend this evening, but we will welcome him at, at our next meeting. But why don't you run through some of your initial ideas on this, on this topic for us, Kim?
Well, I think that the main emphasis for us in the next year should obviously be the local comprehensive plan. So in order to hire a, thank you, sir. In order to hire a consultant, we have to issue what's called the request, an RFP, Request for Proposals and Cost Proposals, typically that, once you develop it, you want to have it out for probably like 30 days, and then you need to accept them, read through them. Typically, you pick three to have interviews with, and then you select it, and then that all needs to go to the Town Administrator's Office for them to approve execution of the contract. So that's probably a three or four month process if I can get started on, on the RFP. I've collected a bunch of different materials from other towns, and I have an idea of how we will all work it, but that work needs to get done, and that should, I think, be the emphasis for the board. The other thing is, is obviously the Housing Production Plan is still going on, and you guys need to participate in that process, as well as need to formally approve that the Housing Production Plan before it's submitted. And it's also very good for close coordination with the local comprehensive plan. We're also working on updating the Open Space and Rec Plan, and of course, again, participation from the Planning Board, and that is important as well as combining it in with the local comprehensive plan. And then we're going to have our Fall Summit and talk about how everything went with the Employee Housing Summit. I was not anticipating having any zoning for this fall. Doing zoning twice a year is a little bit too much. I don't know how people do it with city councils, and they can do it at any time. But if we're going to think of anything for the annual town meeting in 2023, we should probably keep it limited because we are going to be concentrating on local comprehensive plan and these other plans that we need to, to be updated.
Yes, Susan.
Kathy, I know you've done this before, but what, what exactly is the local comprehensive plan? What elements are included? What are we doing with this? What is it? What does it do? What does the plan do?
What does the plan?
What is the plan? What, what is the local comprehensive? Is it a real estate plan? Is it a long-term housing?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. We, maybe, you know, we had an update, and we went through all of it. Local comprehensive plan has a bunch of different chapters and different things. Obviously, we were talking about all of our natural resources, water resources, coastal resources, and identifying, you know, what our goals are for those, as well as the action items and implementation of those. And we also have our built, you know, the housing, our economy, all of the things that were kind of basically hit in the vision plan. We would then be expanding upon that and identifying very specific goals and actually, say, specific action items to meet those goals.
Okay. And this is legislatively mandated, isn't it, right, Kathy?
It's, it's one of those things where we want to have a, a Cape Cod Commission certified LCP, because it helps us with things like, we wanted, we extended our growth incentive zone, but we can't modify it and to have a certified LCP. So there's a lot of things here that we might want to, benefits us to have a certified.
Okay. So there'll be a lot of more detail than, than in the vision plan.
Correct. Yeah.
Yes. And Kathy, you mentioned both the, the open space and rec. There may be an opportunity for Planning Board members to be part of that.
Yes. When Kelly Grant had left Conservation Administrator, she, she had been talking about having the Conservation Commission create an ad hoc committee. I haven't talked to them yet about it. So of, of members and making it up of, it could possibly be members from, obviously, the Conservation Commission, Recreation, Open Space, and maybe having someone from the Planning Board to kind of get, and there might be a couple at large. I don't know how many people they would want on, on the, on the committee. And then also authorizing some funding for the Open Space and Rec Plan through their wetland funding that they have. So I, we're going to talk about committee assignments a little bit later, but unfortunately, Jim's not here. So we might have to talk about that at another meeting. But keeping in mind that maybe we need a short-term person to go on an Open Space and Rec Plan, which I imagine would be like a year-type thing. It wouldn't be something that would be perpetual like the other committees that we have.
Okay. Anything else on board goals? I'd like us to start thinking about anything else that we'd like to consider as priorities coming up. Yes, Susan?
Well, I, I don't know how the town is getting organized on the, you know, the, the potential for development along 28 as the, as the wastewater pipe comes down, and whether there's going to be some sort of a, you know, group put together in the town by town employees and maybe some board members. I just don't know how, for example, how do we incorporate, for example, changes we might want to make to signage or to, I don't know, green requirements or things like that? How, how is the town organizing to look at development along 28? And what role does the Planning Board have in that, in that endeavor?
All the things that you're talking about is basically zoning-related. So it would be Planning Board leading, leading the charge, I would think, on all of those things, obviously getting input as we do on any zoning amendment from a bunch of different town staff, the public, that type of thing. Trying to, to make.
I mean, I don't know who is the point person in town to sort of pull that all together. It's not the plan. I don't think it's us. I think it might, I just don't know.
There's a couple of things. I mean, obviously, what Route 28 looks like has a lot to do with economic development. And I know CEDC has been looking at some things. I know that Bill Scott, the Assistant Town Administrator, wants to do a study on, you know, how, how would we market Route 28? But I also think it gets back to a lot of what do we want Route 28 to look like? And then there's the public realm, what's happening in the mass DOT, and then there's the private, what we want it to look like on the private properties. Private properties, obviously, really is, in many respects, the Planning Board, because the, the zoning bylaw kind of dictates all of those particular things. I think right now, some of our design standards could probably be beefed up. I think for a long time, we, we tried to be more lenient with things because we were trying to encourage some redevelopment of some of the things. Now that we might be a little bit more attractive with wastewater, maybe we want to say, instead of certain things being advisory, it's, it's, might be mandatory. And I think it starts looking at our site and architectural design standards, which are a little loosey-goosey, and those types of things. But I also think that, that like the Villa Center overlay district is probably way too specific. I mean, that's extremely detailed. So maybe coming up with some general design standards, just good basic design standards would make it, would make a big difference without being too detailed. But kind of want to get a little bit further along on the LCP before we take on a larger endeavor, which would involve quite a bit of rewriting, I think, of the zoning bylaw. In order to do that, time is not our friend, because if things are moving along quickly with the sewer-ing, we don't want to be behind with our, with our design standards. So I really think this next year, we need to be concentrating on the local comprehensive plan. The following year, we need to start looking at what, what zoning amendments do we want to make so that we get the types of redevelopment on Route 28 that we want, and what it looks like.
Example. Yeah, sure. Someone asked me the other day, what if, we have several, as you know, vacant parcels on 28 now, particularly in the western, western part of 28, as you had taught hanging on us. Johnny Yeezus down, the designer warehouse is down.
It's been purchased, though.
I know, but I mean, there's no building. It's a vacant lot. So what if, for example, a Hilton approached the town and wanted to put in a big resort, a 24-month, you know, year-round indoor pool, winter activities and stuff like that? How do we incorporate that kind of suggestion into what's happening now? How do we, how do we, how would we handle that? If, if the guy called Kathy and said, I want to come and talk to you about making a $35 million investment on Route 28. I need all those four acres. We want to do a, you know, 12-month resort, basically. What does Kathy do with a request like that at this point?
Oh, well, typically what happens is someone will, will have a concept plan, and they'll call, and they'll meet with multiple staff people first and kind of talk about, what are the regulations? What are the restrictions? How many bedrooms, or how many guest rooms can you have based on this size? For something like a raise and replace, the design standards typically work very well. It's when you start having redevelopment where you don't want to discourage some improvements, but you want to get them as close to the, to the better design standards as possible that I think we need, need to work on a little bit. But I mean, it's really no different than things like the Hampton Inn or some other, some larger projects. There's a process. It does go through the Design Review Committee, and then depending on whether it's on a motel property or how they're developing, maybe goes through the HMOD1. So if they need any relief, it would come to you guys. It depends on, on that. And that's the type of thing that we would talk about with them in the initial meeting. Then you would go through the formal design review, the Design Review Committee, then it goes through formal site plan review with town staff, so they know all of the different permitting and the different components. And then they would go for any particular type of relief.
But at the map level, who would even make the decision? What if someone said, well, we don't want a big guy there. We'd rather have small sort of boutique-type places. How does, what if someone, we got that request from Hilton, and it sounds like a great plan. It would be, you know, year-round employment, that kind of thing. What if someone stands up and says, I don't think that's such a great idea? When does that, I don't think that's such a great idea conversation occur?
It's the zoning bylaw. It's kind, whatever's in the zoning bylaw as an allowed use or conditional use through a special permit is what's on the books now. So if somebody came in and they're like, I want to do a hotel, hotels are allowed in the B2 based on, I think it's one guest room per 1,000 square feet, where they're allowed to do that.
Okay.
And if we're saying that we don't want a large, then that's changing the zoning bylaw.
I see what you mean. Okay. So the existing zoning right now would be the bedrock?
Yes, yes. Right. And, and all of the underlying areas, right? I mean, the, the GIZ we just talked about, which gives developers certain, enables developers to look at things a little differently. If it's in different districts, it, it may come to the Planning Board, it may not. So if, the, the, there is, though, I think, with regard to wastewater, some, a, a, a good point you've made is kind of the longer-term vision. If Route 28 and wastewater can support development that we never could have dreamed of having before.
And that's what we hope happens.
A 10-story office building. I mean, that's not going to, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we want to.
Zoning people out there does not allow. Don't freak out. I mean, the vision of what, what you, what we now can, that we can offer as a, as, as, as a benefit, if you will, does need to, we do need to start thinking about that. Because the, the pipe is going to change. The pipe can, if we, if we let it, can change, can change a lot.
And it should. I think we should really benefit from the development opportunities that are going to be presented. I just wasn't sure how we're organized to take advantage of those opportunities. I see, I still see us as very fragmented. I don't see, maybe, I just don't know whether there's going to be a team put together that's going to look at these things, or whether it's going to be business as usual.
I think it's a combination, but.
Yeah, yes, Brad.
I think I have a quick idea. I think when we talked about it briefly eons ago, I think what they're going to do is, let's, I'm making this up, let's say there's 40 gallons allotted to Route 28 in Yarmouth, and Hilton comes in and says, well, we'd like 22 of those gallons. It's going to offset what we can give water, water usage and sewer usage other parts of the town. And that's where the town leaders, whoever they are, have to say, Hilton seems to outweigh it. We're going to pull some water away from this area of town and sort of like, almost like transfer development rights, TDR, and say, okay, you're gobbling up 22, but in exchange for that, we'd like X, Y, and Z.
I see what you mean. Okay.
So that's where I think it's going to come down to. Because the pipe is only going to have X number of gallons usage per day, per hour, for whatever. And it's just going to be, who's going to get it? And what, what are they going to promise the town?
It's an extremely good point, because we're looking for state revolving funds 0%, which you have to have growth management. So we have done a build-out analysis for a certain amount of development. No one's been assigned anything. It's just kind of saying, what do we think might potentially happen? But there needs to be land use control laws that are administered in order to dole out that money. I think as far as like types of things that we might like to see here, I think that marketing study that, that Bill Scott's talking about, like, what do we want to, what do we want to market here? And not what we have and market that, but what would we like to be when we grow up?
This is funding that's been provided by CEDC through the tourism fund.
What do we want 28 to look like? And how does that reflect what we want the town to be viewed as?
I think it's a combination of the CEDC work that they're doing with the Bills, with Bill Scott, as well as kind of the local comprehensive plan, kind of building, what does the community want to see?
Well, the idea was that, 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 that consultant effort would help and feed the LCP, being very much a part of it. So.
And, and you know, the other thing is, and that's a good point to bring up, Joanne, is the growth incentive zone, which changes the thresholds for a development of regional impact through the Cape Cod Commission.
And we extended till 2031 recently, so that does.
Only on the 35 motel properties. So some of the things like the Chinese, old Chinese rest buffet, tasty buffet, that's not an eligible property. So if they wanted to have, you know, 30 or more residential units, or if they wanted to have a larger motel there, they may be triggering, you know, the DRI process. So that's why getting the LCP certified, and then that's a whole nother planning process. Where do we want to give, you know, some of the benefits of a growth incentive zone?
Right. And that, that vision would, at least that, with someone that knows what we want, to set with Kathy and the planning and local comprehensive plan. Okay.
The idea, the whole idea behind the vision plan was to set the, the basic foundation for that, as to, as to how we want to look down the road and what we want Yarmouth to look like.
So if someone came up with a crazy idea, we can say, no, that really wasn't part of the vision plan. There'll be someone that will be around to say that.
Well, I think if somebody came up, I don't know what a crazy idea means, but if somebody came up with an idea.
10-story office building.
No. Well, it wouldn't, it doesn't fit as a zoning, so it, it wouldn't be. But if through all these marketing studies, we decide, well, maybe we want to allow four-story office buildings, because we feel like that's something that we want to market, then that's where the zoning would need to be modified and changed. Obviously, office uses have lower wastewater flows than housing uses do. So we probably need to balance.
Yeah. Yeah.
I do have one question to, to you, to you, to Kathy. Could you ask the Commission if we have to pass the LCP as one total vote, or can we take a piecemeal?
I believe it's one.
Shoot. I was hoping they'd change that. Okay.
I can double check.
That's going to be a toughie. Okay.
You mean, approve it as we go? Approve the pieces of it as we go?
We're doing sections as we go, and they.
Like Housing Production Plan, Open Space.
It's my understanding, unfortunately, that when we started this whole process way back when, they want one total vote. You have to bring everything back and say, okay, guys, I'd like to vote on it. And that's where you better have your ducks in a row, because that's a big vote. If it goes through, God love us, because we could use the LCP certified, but still have to get 67% of the votes. So.
Yeah, I think.
If you could just ask.
Yeah, I think the key is.
That's a town meeting approved?
It's a town meeting approved. I'm not sure whether it's two-thirds or a majority for just the planning plan. I'd have to check on that, too.
I think it's two-thirds. But yeah, please ask, because 50%, 51% easier than 67. I think we can get 51.
And I think the key emphasis at town meeting is, this is a plan. It doesn't allocate funds to anything. You're still going to get another bite at the apple. If anything costs any money, you know, you're going to another, get another chance to vote on it. Any changes to zoning, you're going to get another chance to vote on. So this is just kind of giving us an idea of where we're heading and where we want to be going, but not necessarily enacting anything.
And so to connect this to the goals, Madam Chair, that we were talking about earlier, does that mean that 11 months from now, we'd like to be at town meeting with an LCP?
No.
It won't be completed.
Right. So I'm just trying to understand what we're, how we're thinking about our annual goals. We're not trying to think that definitively, because it feels like more like a 24-month process and not a 12-month process. Who knows?
I would, I would say so.
Okay. That, that helps me, because I wasn't sure how quickly we were being, because I'm relatively new still, trying to understand that, the, the, oh. I was just trying to understand the velocity of, and what's expected of us, because obviously that would inform our annual goals. Because if it was supposed to be 11 months from now, that would be a whole, right. I didn't mean to do that to you, Kathy. But it's helpful to me as someone who's relatively new, just to kind of keep in mind that if we can, and it ties into Brad's request, which is, you know, if 11 months from now, we have a Housing Production Plan, an Open Space Plan, those kinds of pieces, in addition to our vision plan and the other pieces, then that would be consistent with an annual goal, as opposed to what the LCP overall might want, which is more of a two-year goal.
I, I think.
Hope that made sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would love to be done in 12 months. Whenever you're trying to build consensus and you're trying to get input from so many different people, you know, it's like herding cats. It's just a very time-consuming process. I'd like to really, you know, rely on a lot on our specialized committees and boards that we have as our first line of, what do you guys think on, on some of these ideas, and get their input, and then, then go towards the public input. You know, it's can be as complicated as people want to make it, or as simple as people want to make it.
But it wouldn't be help, it would be helpful to think, as you're asking us to do, Madam Chair, to think backwards from 12 months from now, roughly, and to, and then disperse us throughout the committees, which we'll talk about tonight and perhaps in two weeks, so that we can carry that message, and we can try to herd the cats in each of those places, so that collectively, the herd is moving forward, so that when we get to a year from now, we're that much closer to where we want to be with LCP.
And as we, as we go through this, there'll be pieces of this that we'll see along the way. The Housing Production Plan, let's use that as an example. You, you mentioned that already. That's in, that's started, the work has started on that. There's a consultant that has been retained on that. As I understand it, we have to approve that. So there'll be pieces like that, that chapter has to come through us.
Right. But the book is, doesn't have to be delivered to the publisher for two years. That's a helpful analogy. There's, these chapters have to add up to.
The book.
The ultimate LCP book. Got it.
Okay. We'll be talking about this again as we, we'll get our other members involved. So let's move on to our next item on the agenda, committee assignments. This is on the agenda for, really for consideration by our newest member, Jim Saban, who's not here. But I did want to, Kathy shared some information. I did not know this. Jim is already on the Land Use Disposition Committee that you're on, Susan, and you had made, we had made a deal with you that you would, you would serve until.
A replacement.
A replacement was named. So we, we need to talk to, to Jim, so we can have him be the Planning Board rep, and then the committee would have to get an at-large. The at-large position would be vacant. That's how you described it to me, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we may, we, we, he would just switch hats. He would be the Planning Board member and continue, and then you would be relieved of that.
That would be, because these meetings are held generally, I've had actually strange luck attending them, because it's been days I haven't been scheduled to work. But I'm always very nervous that something's going to get scheduled, and I have to work. I missed one, but I'll be able to go to the next one. And it's really, they're important meetings. They attract my getting rid of land. So they're important. So we do need to have someone on there that can, it's pretty consistent about inability to attend.
Yeah. Okay.
Madam Chair, can I put something out there? And obviously, we'll need to be continued discussions in two weeks. Well, first of all, I'm really glad that there is going to be, or at least the potential of an ad hoc committee, to develop the Open Space and Rec Plan. I think based on my work experience, I would be a pretty good candidate from the Planning Board to work on that plan. And I would be, I am volunteering myself that I would volunteer to, to do that. However, as much as I have enjoyed the last two years of the Capital Budget Committee, my new job at the Animal Rescue League, which is wonderful, by the way, is really putting, putting that commitment in peril. And so I've done two budget cycles with the Capital Budget Committee, perhaps with Mr. Saban's consideration, certainly based on his comments at town meeting. He certainly has a passion for the Capital Budget Committee, at least publicly, and perhaps he'll consider that opportunity. And I would look forward to the chance to swap out. I'd also like to just throw out there that I'm still serving on the Library Planning Committee, as also mentioned at town meeting, and have done for almost two and a half years. So I feel like, while I recognize we have a whole series of commitments here, I'm not stepping out, I'm not reducing the number of overall commitments. I'm just asking for a switch of chairs. And I hope that we would consider that in two weeks.
Thank you. With regard to like the Capital Budget Committee, I don't think they're meeting again until the fall. So our normal committee assignments are in the fall.
No, I recognize that, and that's why I wanted to bring it up early, because I recognize it's a very concentrated amount of time. And then there's a very concentrated amount of meetings within that concentrated amount of time.
I will call Mairead and get a, get a Joe Free card for you.
Uh-oh. Well, that's awkward. We'll have to talk about that. But Mairead now has a wonderful new position, not at the Animal Rescue League anymore.
I know.
Okay. Well, okay. But I hope we could, we could have further discussions about it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. The earlier the better that we know your druthers. That's great.
Yes, thank you. And I do feel like this other opportunity is something that I could be helpful with and would like to be a part of, the Open Space.
Okay.
So Joanne, you kind of got assigned to RAC. I'm hoping that you will continue with that. Like you weren't hoping to. I'm hoping that you will continue with that, like you weren't hoping to to jump ship on RAC.
I know, I I can, I can, uh, I I can stay on RAC. Yep.
Perfect.
So we'll, we'll talk with with Jim, uh, in terms of assignments. Uh, I'm, I'm, I may even call him before the next meeting. Okay. Later in the meeting, we'll go through any meetings that we've actually had since our last meeting, which was a long time ago.
Actually, it was just last Tuesday, really.
Technically, right. That's right. That's right. Our next item on our agenda is, uh, the definitive subdivision plan, number two, four, two, seven, B. Easy Street, Yarmouth Port, request for the release of performance security funds. Kathy sent to us a planner memo yesterday on this particular parcel. Kathy, you want to just walk us through, uh, through it? I don't see that interest speaking is here.
Yeah, he said he may not make it. I kind of told him it was up to him as to whether he wanted to attend or not.
Sure. I don't think anybody's on.
I think everyone's kind of familiar with the subdivision. Last October, he came before us for the release of the last lot, lot number two, and there was a few remaining work items. It kind of came up to be about fifteen thousand dollars, so he provided those performance security funds. But he has, I have subsequently gone out and taken a look and he has completed, um, those work items. The only kind of weird snafu is he had installed all of the drainage on lot two, which conducts the stormwater from the common driveway. But afterwards, the person who bought lot two after we released it, uh, decided they wanted to relocate them in order to put their building in the location where the leaching chambers had been. They've been relocated. I couldn't see a lot. It was an active construction site. Uh, but I've coordinated with Mark Rills. There's an active building permit out on that lot. And we will be coordinating the final, uh, you know, inspections and and acceptance of those leaching chambers as part of that outstanding permit. It was just kind of a weird timing thing. If he had asked for the, if before, uh, they had changed things around, we would have given it to them. And we would have dealt with it. The way we're dealing with it is through the building permit. Um, so I don't have any problems, um, releasing the fifteen thousand performance security. Any, any other questions?
No.
Okay, may I please have a motion to approve the release of the fifteen thousand dollar performance security for definitive subdivision plan number twenty four, twenty seven, B. Easy Street, Yarmouth Port.
So moved.
Second.
Paul Shaver?
I.
I.
Meeting minutes.
Make a motion to accept the meetings of three, twenty.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Except zoning board of appeals. A couple of things I'm, I, I, I want to check off, I think, is, again, what Susan had been talking about before the meeting started, uh, a little bit. The Parker's River Resort, Davenport special permit.
Davenport, it's red jacket.
Red jacket, I apologize. Yeah, it's been sold, red jacket. Kathy, can you just give us a brief overview of what what it was that?
Yes, they, they had submitted before the annual town meeting and had on their agenda to, um, have their Parker's River Resort, which I believe is twenty four units, to be a hundred percent seasonal employee housing solely for the employees of Red Jacket. And the Red Jacket would be providing all the meals for for their employees. Uh, I did not watch the video. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to, but my understanding is that it was approved, approved by the ZBA and they seemed generally in favor of it. So with twenty four rooms, uh, it'd probably be double that with regard to the seasonal, uh, employee housing that could be done there. I believe they, and again, this is all hearsay, uh, that it was for one year. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to watch it.
Was it a special permit, Kathy?
I think it was a special permit, but I'm not positive.
And when you say double, you mean twenty four rooms means potentially forty eight occupants? Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly.
And I think some of them do have some kitchens in them.
I think there were two units with kitchens.
And they'll, I'm sure, be shuttled back and forth, um, to, to.
You can even walk.
Yeah. That's true. Or if they have a bike.
Uh, the only other, uh, question I have for you, Kathy, is when is Blue Sky coming to the zoning board? Do we know?
Yet, no, they, they came to design review. And design review had some real concerns about the aesthetics.
I want.
They really wanted to see some other options. And we had provided them with some pictures of maybe some other things, kind of similar to what you guys had seen, the sculpture, you know, maybe a bell tower.
I'm in temperature, right, Brad?
Clock. And they were also wanted to have a little bit more information on the location, whether there was any other opportunities for another location. So they were going to be doing some work in the background and then come back to design review. After they come back to design review, which is advisory, they would go to site plan review and then go to the zoning board of appeals, um, for a special permit. Uh, but they would be requesting, uh, very specific waivers. Uh, section four, it's very specific with regard to aesthetics, so I'm not really sure how the zoning board of appeals would would view that. We are meeting on the twelfth to finalize the amendments to their rules and regulations in order to allow for hiring of consultants for peer review. Uh, there's already something in zoning viral law for radio frequency, uh, consultants. We have it in our bylaw.
Yes.
Help fifty three G. Where if you get a super complex thing, we can hire a consultant to review something. If town staff doesn't have an expertise in it, uh, or it's very complicated. The ZBA didn't have that in their bylaw, so we were adding that. Hopefully that will be voted, um, on the twelfth.
And they would then retain someone?
Then they would then, I would assume, it's up to them. They they decide whether they want to, you know, they feel that they need to retain.
And, and the, 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 the expenses is burden, is a burden on the petitioner.
Correct.
Okay. I guess I'd just like to keep, um, keep track of that. And and get in, in, involved in knowing when the hearings are and the like, um, and attending. Steve O'Neil from CEDC is on committee.
The review design review.
And he has been very vigilant about pressing other sites. Sending out, and we said the same thing at the Cape Guard Commission meeting, sending out registered letters and simply not getting a response is not a solicitation, is not, um, and any kind of, uh, due diligence in looking at other sites. We've said it once, we've said it twice. And so Steve O'Neil has picked up on that again through CEDC, which I was happy to hear, um, about that. He called me, so. Anyway, we'll just keep a watch on him, I guess. Every time I go to the post office, I, 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 my stomach turns, quite frankly.
Kathy, did, did they have copies of all our correspondence to the, um, the design review? Do they?
Certainly your memos, I would imagine.
You did.
Yeah, okay.
The ones that we had sent, the planning board and I.
Memos.
Right, so they knew they were aware of our concerns also, okay.
And I would assume at some point as it moves forward that you may wish to write a letter specifically to the zoning board of appeals.
Well, I think that's where I was going with this in terms of what kind of formal interaction correspondence appearances are appropriate for the planning board? I mean, when they have the hearing on it, can we attend?
I've seen plenty of older correspondence where the planning board has written a letter, um, to the ZBA about a particular project, sometimes in support of something or sometimes, uh, in opposition to something. So it's certainly perfectly within your purview. I just think if you're going to the meeting and you're representing the planning board, you need to have the approval of the board.
Of course, of course, of course.
That's why a letter is good because we've all kind of approved it and you've seen it. And it can come far.
But then you can still be in the audience.
Even having a letter and then similar to what we did at the commission, you just read the letter, you know, uh, write it, say it, repeat it.
Sometimes the ZBA will let you decide whether you want to have your letter read. I mean, they're very short and sweet to the point.
Oh, yeah.
So sometimes I think saying you want to give your own oral and then kind of reading it is good versus he'll, they'll summarize it, you know, very briefly.
Well, this is important enough that I think we should have a large voice if, if the, if the planning board still has the same feelings about this. The majority of the planning board still is the same. Okay. And, uh, uh, committee updates.
Anyone have committee updates?
Drive inside is meeting.
On the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth, Monday, the sixteenth, and then we've also been giving a presentation in front of the, um, board of selectmen.
The twenty fourth.
Right, the following week. Just an update on where we are. We've, we've made a lot of progress. Things are coming along. I think we're pretty much on schedule, maybe missed one, but, but we're still, you know, we're within the zone of consideration. We're not embarrassing yet.
We're getting there.
Zone of consideration. Um, it turns out, you know, dealing with the, the environmental, um, considerations are extremely important. Not only for the use, not only for us as a, as a group, but for the citizens of the town. So we're taking a very, and new information comes up all the time. Design information comes up all the time that that affects how we, how we approach the, the boardwalk, so.
Other towns are doing thing, all, other things all the time, like in sandwich.
It's expensive.
Yeah.
We, you know, we want to have, when we get there, we want to have all the information, we want to be able to justify why we recommend something. And it takes, it takes time. So, uh, and then, but I don't know, um, right now, Kathy, there's been no conversation about what's going to happen near this summer. Is that correct?
Oh, no, there's been solicitations and there's been two.
But no decisions or anything, just?
No, 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 no formal decisions. They still need to go before the board of selectmen, but there was for, um, I think they were going to move the Pirate Festival over there from the best of the sports world and also have the carnival again. I guess that was fairly successful.
Yeah, the, the selectmen hacked it too late. I'm speaking as somebody who advertises for people who run events. The, the permission to come forward and submit their idea for what they wanted to do at a location was much too late in the process. And any major group, concert, comedian, whatever, was already well booked. So, um, the, the likelihood that somebody is going to plop down a lot of money and it brings something forward of some sizable is very rare. So that's just, I mean, the Melody Tent is almost completely booked and they've been booking since last, but October, September. So it's just, it's got a longer window, so.
Unfortunately, I think, uh, for next summer, I'm hoping that we will actually be in construction. So there's going to be a season where we're, we're going to lose, lose any opportunity.
The community housing, uh, committee is meeting next Monday and the trust is meeting the Monday after that. Probably for the last time with, uh, Tracy Post as select person, uh, a wonderful woman, brilliant woman, and, uh, we're going to miss her. So we scheduled the meeting the day before the election. For as long as possible. She tried to fight for the eighteenth and we said, no, no, no.
I have two, uh, water resort, RAC met on April eleventh. And I, again, it was pre-town meetings, so Bill Scott provided a, another overview of, um, uh, the articles, particularly relating to the DIF. And we also got a preview of the wastewater webpages that, that, actually, I guess Kyle is working closely. Kyle Pedicini is looking closely with Bill on, on, um, a website to talk about progress. Um, and it's really, I, I think it's going to be a terrific means of communication for where we are, what's next, how it affects you. Really, uh, what I saw, kind of the beta version of it, was really quite impressive.
They discussed it at the board of selectmen meeting last night also.
Yes, I saw that on the agenda.
Were interested in finding more out. Yeah.
So that, that is progressing, um, and, um, uh, there's nothing that the public can see now, can they? I don't.
I don't know how quickly. I know that they wanted to present it to the board before they went live with things, so I don't know how quickly they're going live, but I'm assuming it went well. That's fairly detailed information.
Yeah.
Think it would be soon.
The other piece of, of, of RAC is, um, and again, this goes to some, um, the, the website address, some of this. Spears Mitra Costas, who's on the committee, is going to head up a subcommittee on kind of formal outreach to community groups. So that the, 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 um, the town and, and RAC in particular, you know, when the, when a, when a resident asks, yeah, the pipe is in my road, what does it mean to me? And what do I have to do? And what do I have to pay for? And how do I, how do I get to a point where if I want to do it, I can finance it and et cetera? All of those questions, um, and trying to reach out to neighborhood groups that will be in the first days in particular to, uh, to start to develop a communications plan of some kind. And so we did not have a meeting, um, this week, uh, but we probably will hear more about that, um, as we go forward.
I have two quick things, Madam Chair.
Please.
Um, the library planning committee met yesterday, unfortunately, because of a work conflict, I wasn't able to be there. However, we were, they were definitely ready to talk more about the funding that was approved after much discussion at town meeting and amendments and various other things. So that money is now going to start flowing into the library planning committee, uh, study. And also there's a pretty comprehensive FAQ that I think is starting to coalesce about questions regarding the library, libraries, um, whose library is, who's, all the fun topics surrounding libraries. And I will say that thanks to the, the nice lady that did speak up at town meeting, I've already connected with her and hopefully she's filling out a talent bank form to join the process, which I, we welcome. And then tomorrow is the next meeting of the school building committee, but all signs point to a fall completion and a, I'll just call it January one move in date.
Well, that's excellent.
For the new intermediate middle school.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Of, of Will.
Hi.
At the town meeting, um, a question was asked about, um, something about, were all three libraries involved in the, what was it? Like, is it a survey that, you know, what was the three library? And the answer was no, only, only two libraries are being considered. What was that?
I think they just want to make sure that, like, when they're doing an analysis of library needs.
It was about data.
All of.
Right, it was about circulation data, Susan.
But that any improvements, public infrastructure improvements would be done to the two public libraries.
I, I think the concern from the gentleman who was talking on behalf of the Yarmouth Port Library, his concern was that circulation data and other data from the Yarmouth Port Library is still, I believe, being used by the town libraries that are not the Yarmouth Port Library. That was the concern.
Okay, so, so, but, but the needs analysis is limited to the two libraries at the town. Okay.
Or a central library, which could.
Well, I would say, I would say in general, the first question's going to be, what do we want from libraries? I think it's starting way higher up off the ground. And I think what part of the issue, as we've known over the last couple of years or maybe more, that sometimes when we yo-yo from ground level, like, don't take my library to flying up high and trying to understand what are the intentions of libraries and also what do citizens of the town want from a library? Those two are very different conversations and I think the attempt by the library planning committee is to try to keep the conversation up here. Because until we can build some momentum and some agreement on what we think and what we're hearing about what the citizens of Yarmouth want from libraries, then we can start to get closer to the ground. So immediately to kind of jump to, please don't take my library is premature. I think, again, I think the purpose of some of the, of the money, as well as the conversations to come from that, are going to allow people to express their concerns about what could happen to a library, but is much more focused on what do we want? And what do we think we want? And what are people saying that they want from library services? I hope that was helpful.
And the Yarmouth Port library is not going to be part of that conversation.
It is, I, I would say.
Physical building.
I would say, I would say, I would say, when you, you know, it depends on who you ask. There's a lot of semantics involved. Here's what I can say, because I'm pretty sure it's true. The Yarmouth Port library is private and is privately funded and is privately managed.
So they get no public funds at all?
It is unclear, but I don't believe they do. I believe that for the, but however, for the purposes of Clams, the Cape Library System, a, a resident of the town of Yarmouth, or I guess any town, can still access books from the Yarmouth Port Public Library. a, a resident of the town of Yarmouth, or I guess any town, can still access books from the Yarmouth Port Public Lib, Yarmouth Port Library, even though it is not a public library.
Although, yeah, there was one resident got up and said she tried to get a library copy and she was.
Okay, but that, I would say that that is
Unusual.
Fifteenth hand. I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I think that has to be verified. I don't, I don't know what that means. I don't know. That's just, that's just a claim in the middle of town meeting. I, I wouldn't.
But she's on the library committee.
Okay, but a lot of people, but you know, we also had people stand up at town meeting to tell us about buildings that weren't in Yarmouth, that they were concerned about it for the recycling game. So.
Wasn't sure what the relationship was between that Yarmouth Port Library and the rest of the system.
Well, I, I think I, I, unless you, unless you know differently Kathy, they are privately run and privately funded. But in terms of circulation and acquiring books, they're still, and they've agreed to, or they're in agreement with the rest of the town for circulation purposes as well as borrowing purposes. That's my understanding. Is it confusing? Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Back on topic.
Yes, no, but thank you for my opportunity to share about the two committees that I work on. Thank you.
You're welcome. I have one other. CEDC met on April twelfth. And we had the pleasure of Tracy Post's company as well for her last meeting with us. And I wish, you know, she, she shared with us her many years of experience and, and was around when CEDC was created and had some good history for us on that. Some of you may have noticed the utility boxes that are wrapped. Anybody notice any wrapped utility boxes at intersections?
In a certain color?
In photos.
Oh, yes, this one made it to twenty-eight and Higgins Crow.
The CEDC, the tourism fund is funding that and we are extending that to additional locations. It's been, for those who have seen it, they look, they, they look pretty good.
Great.
So that was, that was it on my committee performance. Any other board member items?
I'll just ask Kathy one update question.
Sure.
This might end my, my monthly question. Kathy, anything happening with Bradon?
Yeah.
How long, what, what can we do about, I mean, at this time last year, I think the chair was trying to get volunteers to at least clean up the place so that it didn't look terribly dreadful during the summer season.
Private property, I don't really know what you can do.
Can it be, can, is it blighted?
It may be blight, but it's not like condemnable. And, and, you know, even if something's not safe, you can board it up to make it safe or you can fence it off to make it safe. I mean, and you see that fence around that on the structures because, because of that. So it's tricky. You know, she's trying to sell it. Robert C of R, I believe, is her commercial realtor.
Right. So is that the plan right now? The main trust right now is just to sell it?
I think if she could make it work, she would, she would like to, but I don't think that financially, I mean, think of all the, how the prices have like gotten so crazy. I can't imagine.
If it was bad before, I'm sure it's worse now. Yeah. But it's just such a dismal sight on our main street.
And, and you know, I think they're asking a significant amount of money for it.
That's why she can't sell it.
It's a beautiful sized corner lot, has a funny signal. Most people like, you know, a nice signal. So.
Well, there was, there was something preliminary plans, right, to, to not, I want to call rationalize the signalization there by moving it to be more.
There were plans.
Yeah.
Was there some top of shop and then something in the back?
That's what she was proposing, but I think, I think what Joanne saw.
It's a new intersection.
There was a realignment, aligning of the unaligned intersection
Got it.
Through that property and then kind of creating two commercial lots on either side. And where, you know, that would probably be something that would require the town to purchase it and make that, that investment.
If the drive, not if, but when the drive-in site gets up and running and we, and that's, that's sort of.
Walkable spot to there.
Between the drive-in site and that intersection is a tremendous opportunity for like a, an economic development. You know, pod, you've got wonderful Captain Packers, they're expanding into the other. You get the Pirate Museum. So within that quarter of a mile, and yet at the other end, we get the drive-in site in pretty good shape. At the other end, that place looks like, you know, a bombed out entity and it's.
Unfortunately, it's been like that for way, way, way too long.
Yeah, it has been. Okay.
All right. Any, any, any other staff updates?
Kathy, just you'd like to. I just wanted to remind everyone, I think everyone picked up or they have in front of them the application materials for the Route Six A cluster definitive subdivision and special permit application. I just wanted to get it to you guys early so that you can kind of peruse through it. There's quite a bit of information there. Prior to the meeting, the public hearing is scheduled for our next meeting, which is on the eighteenth at five thirty. That would be a hybrid meeting as well. And I will, before that meeting, I will provide a staff report like I usually do and will have comments from other town staff as well.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question about that?
Certainly.
I'd like to ask about notification of a butters. Because I know when we were, when we had this conversation eighteen months ago, when we had the preliminary subdivision meeting, there was, there were a few people from Hockendom Road specifically that had reached out to me over time. And I, of course, referred them to you Kathy and just wanted to check in on that.
A butter notifications went out to everyone within three hundred feet of the property on April twenty-ninth. It, the first notice in the paper was on this past Monday and the second notice will be next Monday. I've already had three people come in to town hall asking questions about it. More curiosity there about what it looks like. Is there more budding, budding it than, than anything else?
Without doing the math, because I don't have my Google Maps open, does that include Hockendom Road?
It includes portions.
Right. I mean, let's say the tip, the, the first X number of houses on Hockendom Road.
Probably, yeah.
Okay. All right. I think that's important because those are folks that are, have expressed previously that they're, that they, they claim they're being impacted, which will certainly be worth discussion. Thank you.
And, and I, I, I would like to go to see the site.
Yes, that was my second question. Would love to do that.
We should probably not do it all together because then we'd have a meeting.
Without a quorum. We could do it in twos and threes, but not fours and fives.
It's not a lot of good parking because.
No, there is nothing. There is not.
Do you have any suggestions on how I access my feet?
I don't think.
Towards the end of Eileen Road.
Where I would go. I don't think there's room to park on the.
Top of the hill and look down. There's a topography up there. You'll be at the high watermark looking down on the property. The tree line obviously will impact your view, but you'll get a general idea of what, what's what.
Okay, it's, I hear from the people that have been, the neighbors I've been talking to is it's not super walkable, it's very briary. So I don't know how easy it would be to park there and try and walk and, and walk through.
The other thing is, if you go through, you can see if someone comes up in the meeting and says, Madam Chair, how about using, you know, access off of Bligh, you can say, well, now we're impacting, you know, thirty-seven residences sneaking in from six A that way, coming in, you know, so at least you'll have an idea of the depth and the breadth of the property.
When you pull out of Eileen, also take a look at the site distance. There's a big dip there. So. But if anybody approaches you, you know, you can let them know about the public hearing and that they're certainly welcome to attend. And then you can also direct them to me if they have any questions or want to see the plans. They're online as well, but people sometimes need a little explanation of reading the plans.
And they had to read online too.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So we have a set right out on our counter.
What about at the top of Concomsit? I hope I'm pronouncing that right. Though what about that end?
I don't think they have access.
I don't think they have access.
They don't have access.
Is there a way in through the high tension lines? And don't they pass through there in the back?
They do.
They do, but they, they.
They're all fenced off.
It's an easement over private property.
That's where Francis Helen comes up.
Yeah.
It's still on private, it's still on private property. Yeah.
They don't own that.
They don't. Okay. All right.
By the way, the next meeting, I've got, because I've got my biggest event of the year on June third, which is a Friday. So June first would be the Wednesday, right?
Yes, it says June second in the correspondence. I think it's a typo.
I'm like, I'm looking, go wait a minute.
Yeah, June second, I also have an event.
I don't even know what year it is. I wore twenty-twenty the other day.
We're not going backwards. Come on now Kathy. We're not going backwards. So Madam Chair, you, you were basically saying if we would like to see the site before the hearing, we should do it individually.
I guess so.
Find a way. There is no site visit being planned.
Yeah.
Got it.
And, and should anyone, I see that you're snooping, if that's appropriate word. It's okay to identify yourself as a member of the planning board.
Yeah.
We just would caution that we shouldn't be answering any questions.
Of course.
You've got a question, direct it to Kathy, write a letter.
Come to the hearing. Right. And that's why I brought up the issue about the butters as well.
If you have, if you have an opinion about this, it's important to come to the hearing, send a letter, other like.
And I'm happy to go through the plans with people to explain.
Okay, I, I do not have anything else. Kathy, do you? Anything else for us?
Nope, that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you all. Thank you Kathy.